All right. We'll now call the special joint session workshop to order for the city council and planning and zoning board. At 5:00 PM, please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation was given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for being with us today and thank you for your love that you share with all of us here. Yeah, thank you for your guidance to bring us to this building today because it's a special building as well as a special meeting. We ask you to look after our children that are about to go into spring breaks in the near future. And I also want to wish everybody that has a happy birthday today, a happy birthday because it's a special day for a lot of people. And I do this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir, starting with council, Councilmember McGuire, here. Councilmember McKeer. Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard. Mayor Anderson. Now, P N Z, Member Jordan. Member Marshall. Member Salz. Vice Chair Schuler. Chair Miller. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, we only have one item on our agenda. It is intended to be a workshop between the planning and zoning and the city council. This was requested by the planning and zoning board. There's an issue that's come before us talking about shipping containers and the restriction thereof. We realize that you guys had a quite lengthy discussion already and you wanted to hear our input as well as anyone else in the city that wanted to discuss this. Do we have CFRPC here? Yep, okay, perfect. So do you want to tell us a little bit about what is our current situation and what this is proposing?
On behalf of CFRPC, I'll give a little preamble. Currently, the city has a, basically, a no, zero tolerance. They're not allowed in the city whatsoever, whether it's commercial or residential. So obviously, there are quite a few of them in the city, a lot of them have been here for quite a long time. And I took it upon myself to basically grid search the city and came up with thirty-one different locations within the city limits that currently have at least one shipping container on the property. I think this obviously needed to come because right now there's thirty-one people that are in violation of this ordinance by definition.
That you know of?
Yes, that I know of. So we've come here to, basically, you've been given a draft ordinance that I believe was a product of the city of Arcadia who had a similar issue. And I sent out a letter to all locations, the people of every location of the shipping container in the city. I see there's a great deal of people in the audience. I have had two responses that I told the separate owners I would read on their behalf since they couldn't attend. We recently just found one, as of about a week ago, that's actually in the residential area. So I can't, I can't enforce just the residential one because I think that's a common thing. They shouldn't, my personal take, they shouldn't be in residential areas. But I can't, I'm not going to cite them and knowing that there's thirty other, or thirty-one other that are in violation of it. So we've got to come up with some common verbiage for this ordinance so it's equitable to everybody involved, especially the people that have commercial property in the city limits who benefit from those the most. Okay? That's a little bit of an overview.
All right, so the proposal is currently that they would not be allowed in any residential whatsoever. However, they would be allowed in C2, C3, C4, I1, I2, and PUDs. The only exception for residential would be for construction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. What is the flavor of the boards here? Do we want to hear the speakers in the audience first, or does everyone want to give their take on it, or?
I think I'd like to hear the audience first. I think the board should give their take on it and then hear from the citizens.
Okay. Well, let's go through the board.
Some of the discussion we had at the last meeting was allowing them in commercial. But how do we define how many units they could have, given what the zoning is and how to parse that out? The verbiage in there, I think, was so many units per square feet of land, or so many containers per square feet of land that depending on the zoning. One thing that Jeff had brought up, it's kind of like how we did the, I believe it was the carports, is that instead of doing it per square foot of land, going by percentage of ground coverage, which is how a lot of it is worded in the code.
LDRs.
It just got, yeah, it just kind of would alleviate, so if you've already got a concrete, you could put a shipping container on it. Or if you haven't used that, you know, if you're not up to your maximum, and I think in C1 and C2 was fifty percent. So if you're not up to that fifty percent ground coverage, you could put however many containers. But of course, they would still be required to maintain them, have them painted, you know, be to...
So essentially, they would be more like part of your main structure to get you up to your whatever limit is of fifty percent, or?
Yeah, precisely, yeah. So whatever that section, that particular lot is now, is what, you know?
If it's only covering twenty-five percent, but you're allowed to cover up to fifty percent, you could use these to cover up to fifty percent, is what you're saying?
Yep, that was kind of where we had left off.
Okay.
And there may be some other different takes on it, but...
Okay.
No, I would, I would definitely agree with what Daniel said. I believe there's got to be some restrictions on commercial and residential, definitely. I'm not a, personally, I'm not a fan of allowing them in residential at all. But as far as commercial, I would tend to agree with what Daniel just said. Obviously, we can't just arbitrarily say it's okay to have however many you want. There would have to be some sort of guidelines as far as the square footage that goes along with that. So shortly, I agree with what Daniel just said.
We did, I think, say that they can be brought in for moving and you could be allowed seven days.
What was in that ordinance?
Huh?
Yeah, that was in that ordinance.
In the residential, yes.
I think a part of what, what we were worried about also was if this does pass is grandfathering those in that already have these that may not meet the current or new code that we come up with.
So are you saying that you would be in favor of grandfathering in the ones that currently exist?
I don't see how you could not do it.
I'm just trying to clarify what...
Right, that's, that's my thinking, yes.
Okay.
I have to agree. I don't think it's a good idea to have them in a residential area, if it is a commercial area, for commercial use. I unders, you know, that, to me, is, there's so many other commercial people here in town already that have them. I didn't like the way the ordinance read that they'd only have a hundred and eighty days to get rid of them. And we have some here that's been here for thirty, thirty-three years. You know, you just can't chase a business away that's been here forever. So I do agree that, you know, there should be some regulations, but I don't think, I think I am with them that they should be grandfathered in, the ones that have already been here. You know, we've got a lot of businesses in this city that are in commercial areas that do have the containers. And I don't see us eliminating them and their business because if you get rid of the container, some of them would not have a place to contain a lot of the stuff in their business, like, like Big T. So I am in favor of no residential containers.
Even under construction?
But unless under construction.
Okay.
If they're under construction, I can see that, but as soon as the construction would be finished, then they would have to remove them. I don't see using them for a garage in a construction area. And I know it was brought up, some like the tiny houses, I don't see that. I mean, if the city allowed it, then that would be, you know, the city's purview. But I think that they should be, I don't think that we should eliminate our businesses from having the containers that have already had them. Now, if they're not in a commercial area and then they come up and they want to put one in there and they've moved their business in a residential area, because there are some businesses in residential areas.
Yeah, a lot of them.
So, you know, if you eliminate the residential areas total and there's a business in there that has a business permit from the city, I don't know how that can be adjusted or how that can be addressed.
Yeah, I think the object is to not allow people to live in these units.
Right.
Is kind of the point. That's a gross case, but I'm sure it happens.
Can I also add something? In addition to the square footage, I think there probably should also be a limit as to height, how many, how many you can stack them.
In here, it's already set at ten feet. Would you be okay with ten feet, or are you proposing something different?
No, no, I mean, ten feet, I would be perfectly fine.
I think the standard sizes are eight feet and nine-two or something like that?
There are a couple of businesses in town that do have them stacked too. So then, you, do we eliminate the ones that they have? If there's two on there, I wouldn't want to stack any more than two if they're in a, you know, definite commercial area. You know, if they're a business in a residential area, I don't think stacking is a good idea. I don't think containers are a good idea.
Aside from a grandfathering situation, is anyone in favor of allowing stacking of containers?
I would not be. I would not be.
Seems a pretty universal no on that.
So would we be eliminating the ones that are already stacked, or would we just say they are grandfathered in and we would move on to no stacking after today's date?
Well, that's what we'll decide, but so far, I've heard everybody say they're in favor of grandfathering what currently exists. But cross that bridge and we get there, I guess. Anyone else? Gene?
Like I said, that's the only thing that we discussed and so forth, we're in agreement on it.
I have a question. I'm a little, I'm questioning these businesses that are in residential neighborhoods, which, what are we talking about? Because the only ones that should be in a residential neighborhood is a home-based business and they're not allowed to have them. Now, there are businesses that, like, are intermingled, I guess, but they have a C1, 2, 3, or 4 zoning designation. So I would like to clarify that. Are we talking about a R1 AA that can have one just because they're sitting next to a C2 business? I don't, I don't understand that.
I don't think so.
To me, it should be if they have a C1, 2, 3, or 4 zoning designation, or an I1 or I2, then that's what we're talking about, not a residence.
But there may be circumstances where someone perhaps had a large lot of R1 and then they had got a variance or something to that effect.
Then it would be, right, then it would become a C.
There were other cities that had in there like a minimum size of five acres. If they owned five acres in a residential area, this is just an idea that some other cities threw out there, then they would, could come before the board for like a special variance or in any kind of agricultural setting where they had a lot of land. It's just an idea. I'm not saying I agree with it, but that's just what some people...
Right, and currently, right now, I don't know of any of those parcels other than that are proposed for development that exists that anyone has five acres currently with, I believe...
It would probably just be the ag that we've annexed in the last ten years.
Correct, and now those are going to be for development purposes. Those will go from ag to most likely a PUD or an R2.
Okay. All right, anyone on council want to speak up at this time, or we want to hear the audience first?
I'll be happy to speak, if somebody wants to go first. I actually agree with all the proposals that you've all brought to us.
If you guys are sharing that mic, try to pull it over to you.
All right, I'll try to share it, excuse me, please. Hopefully, that's better. I, I think you all make perfect common sense. I, I believe like when it comes to a business, if a business is growing so, so well that in order to improve it and to keep it to grow, and if they need to have a bin back there to store products that fly off the shelves, or maybe even seasonal items, and a lot of your big box stores don't have that, I think that's a good thing for a business. They need to have that opportunity to continue to grow or stay where they're at. So I'm definitely pro-business and I like the idea. And I also agree with most everything you said. I don't think they belong in a residential area unless it's a conditional issue like a building contract or some other special issue that we haven't necessarily talked about. But basically, everything that you all brought to us, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, anyone else in the council?
I just have a question, actually, about the liability part of this with the stacking. If their liability insurance doesn't have a problem with it, because I'm sure that they would send out people to look at it, would their, would their liability insurance say, hey, I don't, I don't think that's a very good idea, and force them to take it down? I mean, should we force them to take it down if their liability insurance didn't have a problem with it?
I don't think that it would be an insurance issue on the city's part, it would be more of an aesthetic issue.
Their liability insurance.
Right, I mean, who's to say what theirs would be?
That would have to do with the insurance anyway, if they allow it or don't allow it.
Yeah, no, the question for you would be aesthetically, do you want to see double-stacked containers going forward or not? I think everyone seems to be, so far, on the same page of keeping what currently exists, it would just be going forward.
So we're not talking liability more so than just how it looks?
Yep. Yeah, that's, I mean, most of what...
That was another thing we discussed, was trying to keep them looking decent, you know?
Sure.
With no graffiti or anything on them and maybe have a hedge or something around them to block it from the highway or the road or whatever. So that was something we discussed, so that might be an idea.
I'm sorry, I also believe they talked about the screening as well. The bufferings from a script, you know, from a chain link fence, kind of the opaque type nylon that goes on there that kind of buffers the view, doesn't completely conceal it.
Made opaque by either the fencing or the foliage, right?
Correct. Foliage, yes.
Okay. Anyone else on council?
So therefore, we'd force them to put a fence up or hedging for the hiding?
That would be a decision that would have to be made, if you even go that way. That was just a topic that was brought up, it wasn't a mandate, it was, but it is in this current proposed one about the screening.
Also, too, what is the time limit on construction? I don't, either I missed it or it's not in here. How long are we allowing?
As long as the permit is open, I believe is what it says.
And I think on that too, I know most people use those during construction. It's not the homeowner or the property owner that's building commercial, it's the contractor. So I think it needs to be delineated that if you are going to allow those, which I think you should, that it's not on behalf of the homeowner with all their belongings sitting on a ten by forty on the property. It can only be used by the contractor for set materials, saws, and all that, that he wants to keep locked up and not stolen.
So what if they have to move their stuff out of the house in order for the construction to occur?
Oh, if you, if it's, well, that's another good point. If it's a, if it's a remo, I was talking about new construction, but if it's a remodel, yeah, there could be a concession for that as well.
Okay. Anything else on council before we go to the audience? Okay. I wasn't given any sign-up sheets, but I'm sure several of you want to speak, so can we see some hands of who wants to share their opinion? Yes, sir. If you will, do we have a microphone for him up there? Sorry, Gene. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Macklin, 1002 West Cornell Street. I liked what I heard, the meeting, pretty much. Nowhere near what we had heard on the street, obviously, but everybody knows how the street is.
Sure.
So I don't have any objections with anything I'd heard tonight other than I don't know about the fences, I don't know about the screens. I mean, I can, I can personally say I got a few that will be leaving under my new, when I get my new building up. Hopefully, I've talked to Randy something about it. But I will be keeping a couple because FHP required me to have the certain three that I bought. And I guess it's kind of a moot point, but it was December of '08 when I went to the city hall to ask for what did I need to do about getting these things and doing them. And at the time, I was granted permission not to anchor the concrete, blah, 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 whatever, you know? So it's kind of, it's kind of shocked me when I heard all of a sudden, after all these years, boom, you know, what's going on, you know? So, but I don't, the only one thing I didn't really think, the fence, the screen, the hedge, especially when I don't know that any of us are going to keep these things forever. I mean, our goal is to build bigger buildings and stuff like that.
They don't last forever anyways.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't, I don't have any problem, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I've been to quite a few council meetings and I believe, don't we have like a minimum maintenance standard in the city as far as mildew, mold, paint, stuff like that? I'm all for getting a citation if it doesn't look good, painted, cleaned, you know, whatever, to make it look presentable. But I can tell you from my point and how far I've come in twenty-four years of business, I need these for special tools that twenty years ago I would have never even thought of buying. And do we use them all the time? No, maybe once every six months, and they might be a fifty, five-hundred dollar tool, seventy-five-hundred dollar tool. The only other thing I did hear about square footage and these guys over here hit, my three that I had required for FHP are only twenty-foot, they're not forties. So I would like you to consider maybe the size, like they were talking carports, because I don't have forties. You know, to say that I'm only allowed to have four and they're only twenty-footers, you know, would be something to think about. Just think about that, you know? But from what they're, what you guys were talking, I've got way more than enough property for anything, so. So I guess that's all I want to say, everything sounded okay to me.
Okay, now...
It's been in there for a while anyway, I would think.
Yes, since, since January.
I just want to ask you one question on the, the fencing. You were mentioning that you were not in favor of doing the fencing or the hedges necessarily. However, would you be in favor of maybe a requirement that they be painted the same color as the primary structure or something to that effect?
Yes, and mine already are. I believe Randy didn't even know how many I had because they are painted the same as the building, same as, you know...
Well, I think that's part of the issue is that, you know, if you get a, like a burnt orange-red color...
And I've got the back of a couple that need to be done.
Yeah.
That can't really be seen, but if you go looking for it, yeah, they, they can be seen. So I don't have a problem doing anything or getting a citation if they don't think it's good enough. You know, I mean, I'll make it right. I think, I think every business person here will. I was kind of, not that this has any, I was surprised to hear that there would be any businesses in the residential area that would even require a container because I know how, how long and hard I had to shop to get the piece of property that I needed and the second piece of property that I needed to be able to move forward with my project. I didn't know you could literally run a business like that out of your house, in a residential area. And I wouldn't want to live next to one neither, so...
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. We'll have to get, we'll have to get your name and address for the record and the microphone there.
Gaston Sirua, he's the 19, 195 South Red Road, the mini storage.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you guys already spoken about that because we were waiting outside on the other.
Oh, yeah, we haven't spoken about your property specifically. This is about the, the container issue as a whole.
Right. Then you already, I mean, can we make comments now?
Yes, that's what this time is for.
Oh, okay, yeah. Then, then I know that you, you have all these new rules. Then our idea was, is if, because we are on an industrial area between two railroads, really hidden from, from, from the rest of the city, and, you know, just to say.
Sure.
Then if, if we speaking about what people were complaining that is containers on a residential area and complaining about the graffiti, then that's not going to affect because we are pretty much surrounded by a lot of bushes, two railroads, then you don't see them from any, you know, from the street or from, from, or from a residential neighborhood.
Sure.
Then we were thinking in putting containers there to benefit the residents of Avon Park to have, to give them like an expensive storage area. I mean, to store things instead of having in the backyard of their houses. Then that's what we were considering, then...
So I believe, were you at the zoning meeting?
We, last time, that was cancelled.
Okay.
And then we came, we drove, we, we are, we reside in Miami.
Okay.
Then we have this investment here, and then we drove today just to, then...
There was a gentleman there that was thinking of purchasing his...
Okay.
That was at the last meeting?
Okay. So maybe someone that was from CFRPC could probably say it better, but I believe there was some discussion about their proposal that they were talking about was actually be a primary structure, not a...
There was talk about that, I'm very familiar with the property. I think they have six onsite already, right? Six Conex containers? Yeah, there was talk about, since it was a storage facility, would there be an exclusion? Because that is their main business, is storage. So they wanted to make sure that that was considered under the whole umbrella of this, this ordinance. And they, they had talked about, I think, making some extra buildings to the south. And correct me if I'm wrong, and kind of piecing them together and using the containers to make additional storage units for the people.
We have some drawings here if you want to see it. We, you know, we want to approach you and give depth to you.
Yeah, I've spoken to them in the past and I've seen the drawings. But if anybody else wants to see it, by all means. Sure. But I think what they're talking about is actually quite a few containers. And I believe that it might have been somebody from CFRPC that was actually mentioning that they would, that would be part of their primary usage, not, it wouldn't fall into this accessory use type.
Right, and that was the whole thing, that, that what I believe it was Jeff had mentioned was that they didn't want it to be, they wanted it to, part of the primary was a different discussion because not only are we talking about that, what they're proposing, but we're also talking about the allowance of them for residential.
Sure.
Because they are being used for residential areas. And is, like I said, Mr. Longshore said as long as he can get engineered plans for them, there's no way he can say that they're not allowed. So, but they just have to meet the, the current setbacks and they have to meet the minimum size for each residential lot.
Okay.
When you say minimum, the requirements, I mean, this is...
This is for a residence, not, not, yes, sir. Yeah, just a resident, because they do make container homes now.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's what they were talking about. But, yeah, I think he was making it more for an accessory structure and not a primary structure like they're proposing.
Okay. So at this point in time, there's no conflict with anything you're aware of that they're trying to do?
I haven't, well, I haven't seen what they're trying, I, I saw at one point, I think you talked about building a couple of big buildings in the back and then that changed a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, in the beginning, we were doing it, we were just going to do a metal structure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And then we were running some, with some problem with the city, then we decided to do containers.
Right, but I think that comes down to is a shipping or is a storage facility an exclusion to the rule?
Okay.
Okay. Then for now, it doesn't really apply in a, in a way.
We'll bring it up.
In the future?
We'll bring it up tonight and talk about it as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so I think we all understand what you're...
We, we need to be there, no, that's private, right?
If you want to wait for the discussion, that's fine.
It will be here or in another?
Here right now.
Right now.
Yep, we're going to finish hearing from the audience and then we'll discuss it.
Yeah, we wait, we wait.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Anyone else in the audience care to speak? Yes, name and address for the record.
Robert Reisig at 400 Fagan Street, Florida Tire Terminal.
Yes, sir.
Just want to say thank you for all coming tonight. I, I didn't realize this was an issue until I got the letter and I'm kind of glad you brought it up because it's important. You go to big cities where these things are all over the place and it gets ugly real fast. So I'm all in favor of, like Richard said, you know, we've got to spruce them up, we've got to paint them, we've got to cover them in some way. I'm okay with that and I'll do whatever I got to do. But I also want to say, I've been in the city forty years and we've got a lot of homes that need sprucing up too. A lot of residences. So if you're going to ask the business to clean up, which I think, you know, we need to be, we need to, we need to be good citizens, you need to have the residents, the people that live and own the homes, and those need to be cleaned up too. So hopefully, we'll, it'll all be part of, you know, making Avon Park better.
So you've heard some discussion here tonight, is there anything that you would change or...
Obviously, I've used them to, as fire breaks and as storage facilities. I put the roofs on them, they work very well for what I do. You all know where my facility is off of Fagan over there. And it's a inexpensive and can be a good-looking way of storing things, tires, obviously, in my case. And so I haven't seen anything, other than I have now used three of them as a wall... And so I haven't seen anything, other than I have now used three of them as a wall, okay? And walls are controversial in this world, but they, they do need to be spruced up. We, I put them there and I never even thought about painting them. I thought, oh, they look good, you know, nobody cares, it's on industrial property. But heck, I'll make them look a lot better, I'll get them painted within the next 30 days without a problem. And make them match the other buildings, whatever I got to do. But they're very beneficial to small businesses, they're hugely beneficial. And as you know, with this last 10 years and 15 years of growth, the cities prospered, all these businesses have prospered and those containers really make it easier to do that. But at the same time, we have to have controls and that's why I think this is a good meeting, so. And you guys all seem very reasonable, I'm very impressed, very impressed, so. Thank you very much, okay.
Appreciate you coming. Anyone else care to speak? Any more hands? Don't see any more hands in the audience there. So we'll take it back to the board here. So far, the thing that everyone seems to be going towards is grandfathering all the existing units that are there, whether they be double stacked or not. Every, in residential, the only thing that would be allowed would be anything under construction with an open permit. There would be no double stacking of containers going forward. We need to discuss a storage facility exclusion. What does the board think about if your primary purpose of your facility is for storage, would they be allowed to be used as such? Without falling under your total coverage or anything like that?
Actually, if, what we were presented in the pictures, if, you know, if they're going to go forward with something like that, it looks like all the other storage units that you see all over the county. A lot of the new businesses are coming up that are storage. They're not containers, but, but they are structures, but they look the same. I mean, if they make them look that way, I would not have a problem with them. If they're, if they're strictly a storage business already. If they have the space on there and they can get the permits from the city or whatever it takes to put more on there, I don't see, in my opinion, I don't have a problem.
So one of the issues that would come up would be the setbacks. So you, you would be in favor of just simply keeping the same setbacks that you would for a standard structure?
Right.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with the setback requirement as far as comparing it to a permanent structure. Also, the pictures are beautiful, as long as that's what they're putting down, you know? We don't want a bunch of different colored containers sitting out there that, you know, don't look like they should all go together. I think there should definitely be some requirements as far as what that looks like. Whether you're surrounded by trees or not, I think there should be requirements as to what a business looks like in, in the city of Avon Park. Again, I think I said that already, setbacks, I would agree with keeping our, our traditional setbacks.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I, I know it's, I actually, I probably should have read these when the other people were talking. These were the two, I did tell them that I would put on record if, and I'll just surmise, I'll give you some.
Okay. Before you read those, does anyone disagree with the two comments that we've already had on the storage containers? For the storage facility exclusion? Anyone? Okay, all right, please go ahead.
Yeah, one was from Charles Devlin, who, of Devco. He has one on his property. He, he totally agrees, they should be regulated. He did basically the two things that I've been hearing here all night. One, it should be at least on the side of or behind the business. And it should be aesthetically pleasing. And then the other gentleman who is right next to the fire department, or you guys probably have seen the big Conex container right behind the building on Main Street. Basically, he, he asked that the city seriously consider permitting such containers for at least commercial uses. And they would like to retain the container on the site. And basically, he says, I understand that there are some regulations that need to be made, but he was.
Any mention of fencing or obscuring it in some way?
I believe there was some mention of that. Last paragraph, I understand that some regulation may be necessary and we do plan to fence in a significant part of the backyard to the south of the building. So it sounds like they have already planned, I have yet to receive a permit, but, application, but they had planned on that, I just want to make sure that it's part of it.
So Randy, obviously you would be in charge of enforcing whatever the board comes up with here tonight, so. In terms of fencing or obscuring it in some way, in the scenario, it sounded like what Mr. Macklem was talking about is he has a very large field and so he might have a container, you know, somewhere in that large field. So you may not want to build a fence around your entire property, but could they build or plant foliage around just that area or fence off just that area where the containers are?
I think they could, yeah, something to at least conceal. And I'll be honest, Big T, I don't know if they have a representative in here, they have quite a few. I didn't even know they had them until I went behind their building one time, having to work down on my personal truck. Tire Terminal, they have a bunch of them, but you don't, with all the tires there, they just kind of, they just kind of exist amongst all the inventory that he has there. There's nothing standing out now, his, I believe he's got a couple that are stacked as Big T. But you, you're talking about cost, obviously, if you're going to have to erect a fence and then the, the, the material to conceal it, they are roughly, I think, nine, nine foot two. Standard fence is going to be six foot, there's going to be three foot sticking over it.
Sure.
As long as, I, I think the big thing is the aesthetics. It's keeping them painted and not just, you know, 18 different colors of camouflage and just paint that looks, that have been there for 30 years.
Yeah.
And I like the idea of making the same color as a primary business where they're sitting in. I'm not saying that's the end all be all, but aesthetically, that would be a step.
Yep.
But as far as the fencing and all that, I mean, that's, that's a pretty big burden.
Well, my only hesitation with the fencing is exactly what you said, that they're taller than the fence.
They're still, you're still going to see it.
And so nobody puts up an eight foot fence, I guess in theory you could, but that's not standard, so.
I personally think a setback from here on, I'm not saying that you can't grand, if you're going to grandfather the ones that are there, I don't know how you can make them move them. But I mean, from here forward, maybe establish some kind of a setback and they can't be forward of the front building line of the proper, or of the main building. I mean, that's just something to think about.
Sure.
And they have to be at least even with it or behind it. And if they do have a fence, maybe just like our standard setbacks that we have, seven and a half feet away from any existing boundary line.
Okay. So on the painting issue, do you think painting, if they're painted the same color as the primary structure, you know, down to something that blends in very well, you know, if your building is, let's say, tan with red trim, you know, and then you paint this with tan and red, so it, it disappears against your building?
It, correct.
Could that be used as a either or? Or would you still want it to be painted and fenced or obscured in some way?
I think it would be an either or, I don't know that you, I think that'd be a little overkill if you had to do both.
I don't think they need to have a fence and hedge if they painted the same color as their building because it's going to look like it's part of the structure.
So is anyone not in favor?
If you have a garage out there, you don't put a hedge or anything around it, it's the same color as the, as the building that it's part of.
Sure.
No, just painted the same color.
Is anyone not in favor of that?
That sounds good, sounds great.
Okay. Well, I think that's an important distinction for a lot of people. A lot of people don't want to put up a fence, you know, trees, they may not want to put up trees, but if they can paint it the same color, if it's something they need quick access to, or it's right outside maybe one of their doors or something. There's a lot of scenarios where I could see that being beneficial. We'll go painting as substitute for obscuring. Okay. Back to the issue of your total lot coverage. Does, do we want that to be limited in any way? You know, if you've got a real big lot, you've got, you know, several acres and you've only got a small building, let's, let's say it was, it was a car lot or something where they have a real tiny, tiny building and then they have a whole bunch of area. And then now all of a sudden they want to change their business and they want to fill that in. Do you think it would be a good idea to now all of a sudden let them have, what, 30, 40, 50 containers?
I would say since it's going to be an accessory structure, why don't we put the, a max as far as the percentage to how big it is with whatever structure they already have?
Your accessory structures can only be so much of your lot, you're saying?
So much of whatever building you have on there.
Okay.
So if you have a small building, then you can't go beyond that.
Any suggestion on to what that percentage would be?
Stephanie? Any ideas? Is there anything in the code right now that says accessory structures can't go beyond a certain percentage of the actual building or is it just lots?
Yes, there is. The actual, it's the intensity part of the, the, I think it's Article Two of land development. And that is, right now, a lot of them is 35% is your, your, your total lot coverage. We just got rid of, remember we, what, we used to only have, you could only have a shed roughly 375 square feet. We got rid of that ordinance and we made it consistent with, or we're getting, actually in the middle of that with the, the carports and that, where it actually becomes whatever the percentage of land cover is in that zoning district.
Right, that's still land cover though. Is there anything in writing as far as if you have a 10,000 square foot building, then you can't have more than 10,000 square foot of accessory structures?
That I'm aware of.
Okay. Might be something we want to look at in the future. You don't want to necessarily promote someone to only build their facilities out of, out of accessory structures. So maybe, I mean, even, even 50%, you know, you can't have, you can't have more than 50% coverage of just accessory structures.
So it's basically the accessory structure can't be bigger than the primary structure, whether it's, well, we don't have to worry about residential, but whatever, because there are a lot of outbuildings on some of these properties, but you do have one main.
Sure.
Area, so if you wanted to write it like that, that would be consistent.
Okay.
In the commercial aspect or the industrial aspect of it.
The total size of your accessory structures cannot exceed the existing size of your building?
Existing size of your main building.
Primary building.
Primary building that you're conducting business in.
Okay. Is anyone?
The other thing would be, are we going to require permits for these? People to have a permit to have these structures, that way we know they're being painted or covered or?
Permits for accessory structures, what do we currently have?
We have one that, yeah, we fill out or they fill out, give to us, we sign off on the zoning and then it goes to the county for permit. But if it's already on the, I, I think again, a lot of this has to do with moving forward. I mean, to do it now in hindsight is, it's not feasible. But I mean, like, it sounds like a lot of this is moving forward, so. But what they look for at the county is they look for engineered plans. On any of these buildings, you can buy it, All About Buildings or whatever out there on 27, those have to have engineered plans for those to be signed off on. The city doesn't require that, but the county does.
Okay.
So do the Conex structures already come with their own engineered plans?
I've, I've never bought one that came with a set of plans, but I'm sure they exist.
Can I also make a point that engineering these things in general is, is very hard to do? Like for, to pass Florida Building Code? So I just want everybody to keep that in mind as well as we talk about engineered plans for these auxiliary buildings because they'll, they will be hard, they will be hard to get.
So accessory structures, talking sheds, things like that, do they come with plans?
Yes, oh yeah, every, everyone that's sold from Home Depot or, or any of these other, they all come with certified plans.
Okay.
And the county requires them.
They do.
They, they meet wind codes and all that.
Because you got to tie them down just like every other structure, or put them on a slab and tie them to the slab.
Interesting. Okay. Well, I'm sure with all of the container homes and container, this container everything nowadays, I'm sure something like that has to exist.
Engineering for that? Oh, yeah, there's, there's some engineers that, that will. Basically, you're building a structure with inside of the structure because you have, any hole you cut into it, you have to support that hole with some sort of structural integrity. So you can't, like a lot of people think, well, I just cut a hole, put a window in. Well, to meet Florida Building Code, you got to have, have a header on that window, you have to be able to support any kind of load that would be sitting on top. A lot of people want to stack them up three, four, five high. You know, they're, they're not meant for that, they're meant to be enclosed containers, that's why they're so strong as an enclosed container, you start cutting holes in them and now the structural integrity is completely gone.
10 year old container is probably not as strong as a one day old container.
Correct. And they, and they don't, yes, correct, the older ones get weaker.
Sure.
They would, they would have to be built to a certain code though, in order to be a shipping container.
Well, they are, yeah, absolutely.
And I think if we require engineered plans, then the cost effectiveness of it goes out the window.
Correct.
Because it's going to be extremely expensive. So maybe as far as the engineering part, just require engineered plans if they modify the shipping container in any way.
I was going to make that point, modify, any, any, as they sit perfectly fine, they sit perfectly fine. Any modifications to it, that's when you run into the issue, absolutely. I just don't want people to think that this is some back way into creating the she shed or the, the man cave or something, you know, something like that, that's all.
Is there some way you could just have it where they came before the city to get okay or permitted or whatever to put in there where you can have it on your records and be able to know where they are without having to go through the county?
Perhaps. Any suggestions, Randy?
Well, that would make us not consistent with any of the other accessory structures that we currently regulate or sign off on, that would be like the only one we wouldn't.
So it would be up to the, the county if they want to allow a Florida code, a, a non-Florida building code set of plans for a shipping container?
Correct, since we do not have an official building, official.
Have you spoken with Mr. Longshore at all about how they handle containers in the county or?
I've only spoken to him about the residence, if, what, if the shipping container is made into a residence, yes.
Okay.
They have to be, they have to be engineered.
Okay.
He will not entertain it, so.
Well, obviously this is a workshop.
This is a workshop, I certainly could reach out to him tomorrow and, and ask him.
Yeah. We don't want to get into the business of making everything a special case.
Right.
And trying to treat everything different, we would like to just follow our standard rules. So if they already have something in place for that, that would probably be the easiest method.
Yep.
Okay.
That's easy.
Okay. On the engineered plans, it sounds like everyone's in agreeance that if it's been modified, it needs to have plans. If not, then it doesn't as far as the city's concerned, but we will contact the county to see what they currently use. Does anyone want to change that or add to that? Okay. All right. As far as setbacks go, I see that there was a set of setbacks just for storage containers in here that covers C1, C3, C4. And then there's a separate one for some different ones. So I know in C4 in particular, there's a zero lot line. Why would that be treated differently and do you think it would be best case to simply allow each zoning to use the existing setbacks they already have?
Oh, I personally think we should use what's already on the books, what's allowed.
Whatever's in the books for I1, whatever's in the books.
That way we stay consistent with everything.
Okay. Knowing that they're different as they're written here versus what we were just talking about, does anyone have any objection to that? Thing then? Okay. Use existing. Okay. That's all the notes that I have on this. We've talked about the screening and buffering. We've talked about the construction zones. Does anyone else have anything else that they'd like to say on this container issue or propose?
Just one other comment with as far as the grandfathering. I feel like we should still, which they all seem willing to do that, but still hold them to the same aesthetics that we're trying to make for everybody else, even though they're already grandfathered in. If, if they need to be painted, they need to be painted, if they need to. in. If they need to be painted, they need to be painted. If they need a fence, or whatever.
I would agree with that.
Grandfathering in could just pertain to how many they have and the location of them, but as far as how they look, they need to come up to standard.
Okay. Anyone opposed to that?
Well, not opposed, but if you, if that's the way you move, then I think there should be a time period that says they have to come into compliance with whatever, you know, whether it's that 180 days that you were talking about that they had to remove them. Now, it could be, could it be less, but I think there needs to be a time period. And that's gonna require, that's another thing, it's gonna require me to go to every 31, and then it's gonna require them to allow me on their property to take photos, because that's the only way that we're gonna know if somebody sneaks one in after the grandfather clause, is if I have photos. And I have documentation from each site that I know how many are on there, and then I get called back there and there's two more, I know at that point, somebody's done something they're not supposed to.
If they won't allow you, could you use Google Images?
I'm sorry?
If they won't allow you, could you use Google imagery?
You could, yeah, but I don't know if they're stacked, how...
Well, if they don't allow them on the property, then just take away their grandfather clause.
Well, one city required, everybody who wanted to be considered for grandfathering in had to submit a request to the city.
See, I like that. I like that, because now you have a document, and there's accountability with it.
There was a deadline. If they did not submit an application to be grandfathered in by so-and-so date, then they were not grandfathered in.
Yeah.
And then the responsibility's on them.
They would have to be made compliant, meaning painted, and they would have to fill out some sort of form.
You could require submission of photos as well.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that.
So anyone opposed to that? It was proposed of 180 days. Anyone want to go less, go more?
I think it's fine.
Especially if you have more than one.
My 180 days was reflective of if it was grant, what we had talked about, if they had, if we went with what Arcady did, they had 180 days to get rid of it off the property or they would be cited, so. I just use that as a reference. I'm not advocating 180 days.
Given that we are proposing this, do you have a suggestion that you would like to see?
I think, really, the audience, I mean, the stakeholders, I mean, maybe 90 days is 90 days long enough to put, slap some paint on a container? I don't know. You got the rainy season coming, may play into it.
Okay. Anyone opposed to 90 days?
Oh, I think that's a lot better than 180.
Okay. Well, not seeing any head shaking, so. 90 days it will be. And as far as the form, you mentioned, well, obviously you have to generate some type of form, Randy.
Yes, sir.
And on that, it sounded like you wanted pictures?
Are we going by the, we going by the self-policing rule, or they want me to come out there and take the, I would, I would rather see what they have, and nothing personal.
Well, can't you accept their packet, basically a packet?
As it is, sure.
No, 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 sign off on it after you visit there, so then that doesn't put you ahead.
Yeah, I like that, yes.
And then there can be a clause on there that they're giving you permission, or if their application is denied.
To verify their pictures, yes.
Okay, I think one thing that we didn't address were the pods. You know, when people are moving, they bring the pods in, so is there some stipulation that we should say that if they're moving and they bring a pod in, they have so many days, I mean, you can't leave a pod in there for two months before you move. You know you're moving, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think, because I see them all over the city, and some people will abuse that, and they'll say...
I think some people get the pods, maybe, and then just pay rent on them and leave them there under their carports or...
Under the auspice that they're actually moving and they're not moving.
So we currently don't have a limitation on pods?
No.
I think we said seven days would be the limit.
I think it was, I think there's something with 30 days somewhere that, I don't know every ordinance, but it does sound familiar if they're using them to move.
So the only thing that would take longer than moving would be construction, and if you're doing construction, you're gonna have a permit, so.
Right. That's easy to verify.
As I'm sitting here, I can't think of a good reason why you would need to go longer than however long it takes you to move.
Agreed.
So, yep. So seven days, is that what everyone seems to agree with?
Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, if you're, those things are expensive, and if you're gonna just keep on sitting it on your property just to keep your stuff in it, I think...
The only thing, do they pay for them by, how are pods paid for? Are they weekly or monthly?
I think it's the, it's...
Days, I think it's how they pay for them.
Daily. I think you get them and then you pay day there. That's what my son did when he moved here.
Okay.
Okay. All right, seven days it is. Anything else?
I do, I don't know why I'm bringing it up now, but I do, I just have a question, and it's something I've seen at three different locations, and I don't know if it's something you want to address or not. It's kind of a different form of the Conex container that people are using. I've seen at least three locations where they're using an 18-wheeler, a tractor-trailer, and they take the wheels off and they set it on the ground.
Yep.
Now, is that worth addressing? Because there are people that do that, and they're using that as their storage, instead of it's not a shipping container, it's just the trailer of an 18-wheeler. It's 52 feet long most of the time.
Okay. For it, against it?
Against it.
Okay, we have one nay.
I don't think that we should, I don't think that we should, it's the same philosophy as the storage container. You're an 18-wheeler versus a small 20-foot storage container, you know, if they're going, I think that in a residential area, they don't need to be in there. If people are just bringing them in there, just like they did for a container, then they should not be allowed from this date forward.
Sure. So a storage, or a semi-trailer would be used as semi-trailers, meaning they would have to be functional. They could not be in a state of disrepair unless it's a semi-trailer repair and/or manufacturing place. Definitely wouldn't be in residential. So only in the handful of commercial applications where you're allowed to have semi-storage trailers would you be able to do that.
And technically, they're supposed to be tagged.
Yep.
So technically, that could be an abandoned, it's not really vehicle under the definition of a vehicle, but there is a requirement to have a tag on it.
So we just don't want to allow semi-trailers to be deemed a storage container?
Correct.
Yeah. And I think everybody's in favor of that? Okay. All right, that's simple enough. Anything else?
Which is part of our code, it's already saying that tractor-trailers are not permitted, so it's already part of our definition.
But again, this particular person is very well-known in the city, and they've been there forever. Is there a grandfather, I mean, it says Conex containers aren't allowed to, so is that something that needs to be addressed in a grandfather clause since you're doing it for the Conex containers?
If it was prohibited before this point, then it's not grandfathered, you should call them.
They've been, they've been there way before I got here.
If you're not required, it doesn't matter, unless it was before your zone was done.
It's hard to say.
It's a matter of what precedes the law that prohibits you from having a trailer there on real estate law.
Sure. I think as a workshop tonight, the board just needs to decide if they want that to be included or not.
Right.
And from what I'm hearing, it was not.
It's not a rampant issue, but it's, there's three locations that I saw that happened.
So you're saying not include them in the ordinance is not being allowed, or not...
Not allow them to be grandfathered or used going forward.
Right.
Correct.
Is that, everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone in the audience care to speak on that issue? Okay. Seeing none? All right, anything else on the storage container issue? Okay. If there's nothing else, that concludes our agenda. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
We have a motion to adjourn. Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.